Can you hear me? Thank you.
Testing, testing. Can you guys hear me?
Loud and clear. Thank you.
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you.
And which position?
I think I'm four. I'm not sure. So Mary Elizabeth, what position am I in? You have to go to the website.
Hessman was four. Is he still a commission?
Uh, no, he dropped off and I just realized that uh my roll call on here is not updated. And Shawna Larson has taken George Brennan's spot.
That's what I was thinking, but okay. Yep, that's the way it looks to me. Okay.
All right, Commission Member Cress. We are recording and ready to go.
Very good. Uh, we will call to order now. The January nine, twenty twenty five meeting. Uh, the Utility and Transportation Advisory Commission, and this is a special meeting. It's a hybrid meeting. So we have some members and perhaps some community participants as well, uh, connecting virtually and uh, some members here in the council chamber as well. Um, so uh, Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commission Member Larson? Oh, well, I saw her. I didn't hear her. Yeah. Okay. I see you talking and I know you're here. Okay? Okay, Commission Member Cress?
Here.
Commission Member Gomez?
Here.
Commission Member Riggle?
Here.
And Commission Member Williams?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Very good. Um, it's time for public comment. If uh, did we have any comments in advance?
No, sir.
Okay. If anyone in actual or virtual attendance would like to speak, please raise your hand now to do so. If you're remotely or using your phone, you can use star nine to raise your hand, uh, if you're connecting by phone. It doesn't appear that we have public comments, so we will move then to our consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like removed from the consent agenda? Pretty uh, agenda, pretty short meeting today, but uh, basically one item. Anything to change as far as the agenda is concerned? Do we have then a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved Commissioner Williams?
It's been moved in a second. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and um, that was Commissioner Riggle. Um, so those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Uh, and it was carried unanimously. We have one presentation as part of our business this afternoon in this special meeting. And uh, that uh, has to do with the um, I'm sorry. Got the wrong page in front of me. Um, that is the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, uh, and an update to that, Mr. Spencer Montgomery.
There we go. First, I want to thank you for coming today. I know this is not your regularly scheduled meeting time and it's extra duty for you today. I'm Spencer Montgomery. I've been here twice to talk with you about it and I noticed on my slide, I left out a word, but I'm glad it was in your agenda. The word comprehensive. So we're going to spend some time today talking about the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. I was talking earlier this week with uh, Mike Rizzatello and he had, he mentioned that there were two members of, of the UTAC that are new this year. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna back up a little bit and kind of catch them up if you can and uh take notes if you need to and, and we can have an outside conversation if necessary, if you have questions about anything that I might say today. So just this big one to advance. Okay, cool. Um, so some of these slides you're gonna have seen, those that were here before uh, on the two previous uh, times that I've been here. So today, just a few introductions. My name is Spencer Montgomery. I'm with J U B Engineers. We, we are the city engineer for College Place. We do quite a bit of work and get familiar with your community. Trying to help you get funding sources to do the improvements that they want from a public works perspective. We have uh, I'll, I'll save that comment for another slide. I want to review progress with you today and then receive any feedback or take any, any comments that you may have that will help us in our process here. So I have some help. Uh, we have a public involvement group um, called the Lending Group and they help us with their specialists and all that, and they've been doing some great work on the uh, Safety Action Plan. We, we had a booth set up at the farmer's market and uh I'll, I'll tell a little bit more, well, maybe a bit more than, than just a little bit on the public involvement aspects. We also have G I S, Geographic Information Specialists as part of our company, a subsidiary called Gateway Mapping. So they've been helping us as well and you'll see some of their work products. Just wanted to, to go over what is required for the Safety Action Plan. This is, uh, the city got funding um, that started last summer to perform this study. It's from the safe, safe streets and roads for all. Uh, the city has some matching funds in there, but uh, it's a five-year program that has, I think, five billion dollars nationwide. So our, our, our main goal in, in addition to completing this study is to have it done soon enough that, that we can apply for uh, implementation funds for one of the highest priority safety projects for the city. And those, those applications are due uh late spring, early summer. Uh, the study's supposed to include all modes of transportation, look for barriers for bicycles and pedestrians, uh, transit users. Uh, it, it is to have a significant public involvement effort and I'll tell more about that. The, the big goal nationwide, and we hear this a lot in the transportation world, is having a goal of zero fatalities and serious injuries. But we understand that, that collisions happen sometimes, but if we can limit the ones that, that seriously and negatively impact people's lives. I mean, I know we can ruin a day by having a fender bender, but ruining a life is a different, different situation. So that's the goal. Well, I'll talk a little bit more about that a little bit later. Uh, I mentioned the implementation funds. The city has, has done a lot of I'll call it pre-work in this case. There's three studies that, that we were given that the city has done that are, have, have a ton of information in them. And I'll explain more about those along the way, but they did a road, local road safety plan in twenty twenty one uh, that identified a lot of potential safety improvements, uh, and ADA transition plan as well. ADA is Americans with Disabilities Act uh, to help those that are disabled. Um, and they identified all the missing sidewalk links where the sidewalk uh ramps don't meet standards, where other pedestrian barriers like not having push buttons at, at traffic signals, things like that. And another document is called the Blue Zones Complete Streets. You may be familiar with that, but they did, they did a thorough review on the complete streets policies that the city has that's incorporated into the municipal code. A lot, a lot of great recommendations that I've discussed with staff. Do we just adopt all these carte blanche and, and move them forward? But there are some challenges with some of them and they recognize that in their own document that, that it's, it's a great desire and a great goal to try to, to have complete streets everywhere, but they recognize that we don't have right of way for all that and there's, there's some issues and so we'll, we'll try to pick out some of the, the most appropriate recommendations from that study to incorporate in recommendations. Um, so that's a little bit of the background. Part of our scope, um, there are several, several things that we have to do as part of the, the grant requirements for this and, and there's a leadership commitment to eventual goal of zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries. The city actually already has a resolution for that. I didn't know that when we started. Uh, but they already have adopted that, uh, zero fatalities and, and serious injuries. I mentioned public involvement. Collision history and safety analysis. Look at what the, what kind of accidents are we having? Where are they at? Uh, identify uh, improvements for those. Um, look for where, where the high rates of accidents and, and fatalities are. Equity considerations as well, looking for vulnerable users of the system, uh, people that don't own cars, lower income neighborhoods, things like that, transit users. Because they're more likely to be out on the street and, and uh have the potential for having a serious accident there with not, not having the protection of a vehicle. Uh, we are also supposed to uh, assess existing policies, programs and practices to identify opportunities for improving those policies. Uh, and, and I'll mention the, I already did, uh, the, the Blue Zones project and the complete streets that, that did a very thorough assessment of, of city policies and then prepare the Safety Action Plan. So I'm gonna spend a few slides here just talking about our public involvement because that was one of the key things that the, that the uh, federal ground wants out of this is the public. And, and uh, I'll, I'll tell you upfront, we've had a, a good, successful public involvement effort so far. We attended the farmer's market last September, uh, talked to a lot of people, spread the word and had a, an online an online survey that they could take and they could drop a pin on a map and I'll show more about that later. Uh, and make a comment in, in several different areas of safety with respect to safety. Uh, we did some stakeholder interviews uh, with, with police and the school district and, and other entities to inform this process. The UTAC role is to be a technical advisory body here for us to give us a local per, community perspective. Uh, J U B is learning a lot about College Place, but uh I don't know that any of us live here and, and travel streets like you do. So you can give us the, the local community perspective and give us, give us feedback as to what we're doing. Uh, I mentioned that we had done a situational assessment with several stakeholder interviews. I mentioned that we did a public survey. So when I first showed you this slide last August, um, we have gone forward with that and I'll show you some of the results that we've had from the public survey that we had. And the open houses I mentioned, we will, we're planning to have another open house once we have uh, some projects to take out to the, to the public and, and get some feedback from them as well. Uh, say, did, you know, did we hear you? Did we hear you right? If we got the projects, are we accounting for the things that are important to the community? So last August, when I met with you, I showed you some maps to just give you a feel for where the accidents are occurring. This is, this is all the collisions. And uh, there's a few different colors there. Um, but the, there's one red one, which, which is the one fatality that there has been in the last five years down on Highway one twenty-five. There have been uh only four suspected serious injuries in, in the city in four, five years. Uh, that's really good. And then there's uh, twenty-two suspected minor injuries, fifty-four possible injuries, and then the vast majority of, of collisions have resulted in no apparent injury or property damage only. That's over almost three hundred and fifty. So to focus in a little bit on those, this shows the accident severity. So you can see a little bit better some of the, the colors other than the green. So the orange ones are the serious serious injury accidents. The blue are the minor suspected injury. There's the one red dot for the fatality that occurred. And interestingly enough, if you, if you look here real close, watch when I go to the next slide. These are the bicycle and pedestrian ones. So the four orange ones are the same. So all of the serious injury accidents or collisions have been uh, bicycle and pedestrian related. There, there's a couple of others that weren't serious injuries, which good for them, right? So, so that's interesting and I'll, I'll take this opportunity to talk just a little bit about overall approach. Um, some of the things that the, the feds are looking for is what they call systemic improvements, system-wide. And, and the way that we're trying to apply that here is that if we have roads that look like the roads that are having serious injuries, then they are roads that have po, the potential of serious injuries. I'll talk a little bit more about this later, but because they're so few, because they're so few, you know, that the zero goal is within reach, right? In fact, if this study had been done a year ago, you, the fatality would not have been in the database. So it just happened last year. So, um, I mean, that's good news and, and, and I'll say this too. And, and I might be making this more complex and, and giving myself too much work, but college places of such a size and, and few enough collisions, there's about four hundred and forty in the last five years. A relatively small number than, than some of the other plans that I've looked at in much larger communities that uh it says we're practical, every road should be considered. And so we're, we're doing our best to try to figure out a good way to do that. I haven't found another plan that deals with every, every road. Uh, now certainly, certainly the important part is uh roads that present more risk, okay? Where speeds are higher and where there's no place for pedestrians to be. And I mentioned earlier that you have the ADA, the, the ADA Transition Plan, which is for basically filling in all the gaps for sidewalks, making, making those safe places for people to, to travel around town on foot. And, and that document I, I find to be very, very good. It, it addresses a lot of issues and it had its own prioritization process in there and, and it it put as the highest priorities, all of those, the, the functionally classified roadway network, the collection, collectors, minor arterials and principal arterials as, as the highest priority. Um, and I'll, I'll share with this, this other piece of information that I think is pretty interesting. And I thought that it was just a not a made up number, but just a for fun number, but the, the city's spending about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to fill in sidewalk gaps and address those issues. And that seems to be a, a pretty good number to me for a community of this size. But after they identified all of the improvements that need to be done to meet the, to complete the pedestrian network, the cost was, it said would take ninety-nine years. And I smiled at that number and thought, that's just, that's just made up, right? But it's twenty-four point seven million and at that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's ninety-nine years. Now, the good news with that is that at that rate of expenditures uh, during the six-year life of their transportation improvement program, they could cover about half of all of the highest priority roads, the, the functional classified network. Meaning to me that in about twelve years of that level of funding that you could have full sidewalks on all of your functionally classified roads, which is where the higher speeds are going to be and where the greatest risk is. And I thought that's, that's admirable, honestly. I mean, yeah, twelve years can be a long time, but it's, it's within view. It's not ninety-nine years. So I ought to commend the city for that and for their efforts and, and they've been working with uh, the city on other projects too, to try to achieve those kinds of things and incorporate additional sidewalks into other projects, things like that, just to, to make it, uh, make it work. And I'll talk more later about the prioritization of other projects as well. I showed you a chart that looked like this one. I've changed the numbers just a little bit, but because we found that we had I haven't figured out why, but we had about twelve accidents, twelve collisions that were double counted. So these numbers are a little bit different than what you saw before. Uh, four hundred and forty total accidents. Um, year twenty twenty was a little lower than the other years, uh, because the travel was lower because of COVID. And then the most severe injury types, you can see the one fatality, four suspected serious injuries, twenty-two suspected minor, minor injuries. I went over those numbers before. Um, and then these two tables here, I hope you can see these at home. Okay. Um, maybe better than I can without my glasses on. But uh, that's why, that's why I look down so I can, I can see my notes here. So on, on the left, this is a, a list of the four hundred and forty accidents of the most common first collision type. And obviously I've grouped some of these together that, that made sense, but a lot of entering at an angle. Um, hundred and sixteen, almost over, over a quarter of the accidents are at basically intersections where somebody's trying to, to change what road they're on and make a turn and to get onto, onto a new street. Rear end ninety-four, over twenty percent of the collisions are rear end accidents. Parked car. And I think this one here with the next one, parked car, sixty-three collisions, fixed object, sixty-two collisions. So a hundred and twenty-five, you add those two up. So something that's not moving is getting hit twenty-five percent of the time of, of all the collisions in, in the city. I think that those are interesting. Opposite direction, one, one vehicle being a left turn, thirty-four or seven point seven percent. And you could read on down, uh, side swipes, bike, bicycle, pedestrian. There are seven of those collisions. Six animal collisions and then, and four were head-on. And then on the table on the right side tells what the contributing circumstances are to all these collisions. Um, and I love And I lumped several of them together into that top category, which is distractions and inattention. There were lots of different contributing circumstances that, you know, inattention or somebody apparently fatigued or asleep. All of those seem to be inattention distractions to me. And that's 23% of the collisions. Did not grant right away or disregarded traffic control. So some people going through stop signs or traffic signals or not yielding to a car that maybe they didn't see is the next highest contributing circumstance. Improper backing, turns, merges and U-turns. 38 or 8.6% of the collisions are people going too fast for the conditions or following too closely was 7.7%. 22 of the 440, so 5% were under the influence of alcohol and drugs. And then some others, other circumstances not listed is almost 10%. So that, that makes it harder to evaluate those collisions there. So I'm going to move on and give you some of the results of our public involvement. So the survey that I mentioned that we had, it was open until December 10th. We had 415 total comments and they, they could choose between different categories of comments, whether it had to do with pedestrian safety or just trying to reduce collisions overall, public safety, speed concerns, ADA, mobility, bike and ped infrastructure or maintenance issues. And that's the order of how many comments there were for each of those categories. With respect to the geography of those, this is ranked by the streets that got the most comments. So Larch, Larch had the most, College Avenue had the next most, 12th Street, Meyer Road, Whitman Drive, 4th Street, Bujanure, Lamperty, Whitman. I guess there's West Whitman and East Whitman. Maybe we should add those together. Meadow Brook Boulevard, C Street and Homestead Avenue. So this is a map that shows. So if you, if you logged in online and you wanted to leave a comment, this is what the map looked like when you got there. And it's, there's a lot of comments. And so you could zoom in on the area that you were interested in and you could pick what kind of comment you wanted. And you could drop that on. And I just showed this because it just shows that there are comments all around town on all of the different kinds of, of categories that we had. We have one of our GIS guys that really likes heat maps, but this, this shows the density of comments of all the comments. This one shows the pedestrian safety comment densities. And then this one shows people that made a comment on reducing collisions and the areas that they were interested in reducing them at. Let's see here. I thought this was going to be at the end. Maybe they didn't get added. We'll see. So we've done some work trying to just identify it. I don't know how well you can see these at home. And I actually have these as a handout for, for those that are here. So let me, let me share these with you. So what this one does is we started looking, drilling down into the data to see what intersections had the most collisions. And we can, we can email this to those of you at home if you can't, can't see this very well. But the intersection that has the most collisions is Meadow Brook Boulevard at Highway 125 has 26. And no fatalities, no, no suspected serious injuries, but there were 12 possible injuries and a couple of minor injuries. The next highest was Whitman Drive at Larch had 18. And you'll, you'll see at all of these intersections that there were no fatalities, only a couple of serious injuries at three of the intersections. And then, and we included all the intersections of functionally classified roads in this table, even though some of them only had one or two. And I did, I did that so that you could see that where, where some of the bike and peds were at and how those match up with the serious, serious injuries. So I'm not going to walk through the whole table here with you. Just kind of for your information, we're trying to sift through this so that we can identify trends and and things that we can use to come up with what we call safety countermeasures. Got a couple of other table here. This is the most common most common first collision type. And this is, this is for all of the intersections on that last table that had more than five collisions. And so in the same order, basically sorted from the intersection that has the most. And then it, it shows us here how many enter at an angle at each of those intersection, how many are rear ends. So interesting that there's quite a few rear ends, half of them at Meadow Brook and Boulevard, Meadow Brook Boulevard at Highway 125, half the collisions there are, are rear end. Rear end accidents. Some are left turns. You can see five of them. Some are side swipes. Whitman Drive at Larch entering at an angle. So that intersection I know can be a little bit challenging because you've got some curvature in the roads there that make it a little bit harder to know whether people are coming on onto the, changing which road they're on, things like that. And then Rose Street at Myra, kind of similar, quite a few entering at an angle. And then some rear end, rear end collisions there as well. I find, find some of this stuff interesting that, you know, how many, what's happening at each of the intersections and looking at the total for each of the columns down at the bottom is also interesting too. 168 total collisions out of the 440. So that's almost 40% of them are, are happening at these. Oh, I forget how many there were. At these, at these intersections that have more than five. There may be 15 or 16 intersections there. And then there's this table here, which shows those same, same intersections, but shows the contributing circumstances at the, at these top intersections. And I added percentages at the bottom of this to see, you know, that almost 20% of the accidents or collisions that are happening at these top intersections are from distractions and inattention. That's kind of prevalent here in College Place. I don't know if that's because of young drivers. We're still digging into some of the, some of the data or if you got distracted. Locations, a lot of activity on the side side of the road that takes the eyes of the drivers off and that kind of thing. Okay. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about potential evaluation criteria that we're working on. And I had hoped to be a little bit further on in this process and be able to show you some of the results of, of some of these. But the way, the way we're looking at this is to try to prioritize all the streets in College Place. What we don't want to have happen is have city staff come up with a project that they want to apply for funding to, through some grant agency and then find out that the, the location or the, or the project isn't listed in, in here. It's supposed to be a comprehensive safety action plan. So we're, we're doing our best to try to account for anything that the city might want to apply for grants for. But along those lines, in my mind, the most important improvements that we can make would be for, for bikes and peds and to eliminate those barriers because those are the, those are the ones that are at the greatest risk, as I had mentioned earlier. And if we can reduce the risk for, for those users of the system and identify locations where, where they might be most prevalent, then we can hopefully get, get away with any fatalities and serious injuries. So here's, here's some of the criteria that we've identified. Functional classification of the road. And in some cases, there's going to be some duplication with some of these. For example, the, the second one is traffic volumes. Usually your traffic volumes are going to be higher on those functionally classified roads. Also consider the number of collisions on a roadway segment or at an intersection. The number of fatal and serious injuries, that's what the focus of this whole thing is supposed to be about. But like, like I mentioned, there, there's only a handful of those serious injuries and fatality collisions. So we want to use some of that other data that we've got above that I just mentioned along with, to create accident rates. It's great if you have a lot of accidents, right? Except if there's way more traffic, the accident rate may not be as high as others. So we kind of want to account for that accident rate as well. I mentioned looking at disadvantaged or vulnerable users. Those that may not have a car that are dependent on walking on the street or bicycling. Poverty levels, disabilities, age. Some other jurisdictions are even looking at language and racial composition of their communities in order to identify neighborhoods that, that might be likely so that we can prioritize projects in those areas as well. I've talked a little bit about speed limit that they, I think it's well documented that the lower the speed, the higher the likelihood of reducing the, the level of severity for any injuries that might happen. The presence of sidewalks or really I probably should have worded that, the absence of sidewalks. That if you don't have a sidewalk, that should probably be a higher priority for, for projects there. Safe routes to school routes should, should get some extra points in the prioritization process because it's more likely that you could have people walking on those streets to get to school or riding a bike. Transit routes, people have to get off the bus and then walk someplace from there. So that makes sense to us that we would give some additional priority to those routes as well. And then I mentioned too earlier about how we only have a handful of fatal and serious injury collisions. But if we have streets that look like those streets, we think we should give some points to those streets as well in this prioritization process. Let's see here. So we, I mentioned that we're trying to prepare some accident rates. We've had a little bit of trouble with the data, but we've got, this shows, this shows the functional classification of roads. The reds, red roads being principal arterials, green being minor arterials and the purple are collector roadways. And on, on here, we, we have the average or a sample actually daily traffic collected this last fall. So we're taking that with all the accident data that we have and identifying accident rates on, on all these streets. So we are actually collected this data in anticipation of updating the city's comprehensive plan. And, and since we had that, we said, hey, we should use it for this as well. Kind of nice. We actually have speed data when this data was collected and, and we'll try to identify where are there vehicles that are speeding? So that might be a criteria that we could add to this as well. Let's see here. Maybe I'll pause right here and see if, see if anybody has any questions so far. Yes?
I have a question about the four-way stops since I've been looking in my neighborhood. And Larch has a lot of four-way stops. Is it, does it seem to be related to that, the problems there?
And a couple of them, I think that there may be. People can get frustrated. I know that the city has been working on trying to get funding for a roundabout at Larch and 12th. And I'm kind of crossing my fingers that our criteria will have that one score well so that that might be one of the ones that we could apply for implementation funds for. I do a lot of traffic studies and we have what we call levels of service. If you've heard that term before, right? Where we, we can take traffic counts and the geometry of an intersection and use some computer modeling and algorithms to determine what the, estimate what the delay is at an intersection. And interestingly enough, for stop controlled intersections with either two-way or four-way stop, the range for good level of service is different than the range for intersections that have a traffic signal. And the reason for that is that I'm okay if I pull up at a, at a red light because I know eventually it's going to turn green, right? But, and you don't have to really pay attention as much as, as you might otherwise, you know, I mean, you got a minute or maybe two to relax, wait for it to turn green, right? But when it, when you're at a stop sign, you got to be paying attention all the time. And you don't know when your turn is going to come. Is that gap in the traffic going to be big enough for me to get into safely? Or wait a minute, there's another car coming from the other direction. And so it can be much more challenging. So the level of service and the delay that goes with that is, is a different range. And so at some of those four-way stops, if during busy times of the day, people might take risk that they might not otherwise take if it had a different form of traffic control, like a roundabout or a, or a traffic signal. So, so your question, is that contributing to it? That may be, that may be true. I know there's some other issues on, on Larch with, with the hills and Lions Park and some things like that and people going fast. And so one of the things that city staff has said is it'd be great if we could get some, you know, speed reduction there and some safe pedestrian crossings for, for Larch Street. So we're, we're looking at those as some of the projects that could happen. And one of the things that we may do as opposed to just applying for one intersection is look at a corridor. Submit the whole corridor for, for a project and, and maybe do more than one intersection and things like that to, to do some improvements. And I think March is a really good candidate for that.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So how do you plan to integrate the equity and other equity analysis into the project selection process? Let me hear some thought.
I've looked at a few other examples of, of how other jurisdictions have done it and it doesn't apply, well, it does apply to roads, but usually it's a geography, right? Census tract level. And so I think for, for those census tracts or the areas of town that have more instances or above average instances of all those criteria that I mentioned, you know, poverty and, and you know, no cars or one car in a household, things like that, that they would just get some extra points to bump those up in the priority process. Is kind of how others, other jurisdictions have, have applied that.
And how about with, you listed a bunch of evaluation criterias? Do you plan to weight any of those criterias? You have to prioritize the project selection.
Right, right.
So I'm just thinking, are you going to give them all equal weight? Are you going to give them different weights? When you're thinking about prioritizing those projects?
Well, that's a really good question. And I, and I think, I mean, in, in a way it's going to, I think it will probably weight itself depending on exactly how many points you give. So for example, if, if we're going to give points for traffic volume, a road with higher traffic is going to get more points than a road with, with low traffic volume. A road with higher speeds is going to get more points than one with lower speeds. The equity thing, one that, an area, a road that goes through an area that has more of those criteria is going to get more points, things like that. Higher accident rate would, would get a higher priority. But, but you do have to be careful and that's why I say we might, we might combine several of these things into one, one score being, you know, risk factor, traffic related or something like that. I know that, I think it was in the city's local road safety plan, they gave a massive number of points. I want to say it was a hundred points for the fatalities. And then 10 points for possible injury and, and probably the serious injury was, was really high too. And if, if it was, if there was no injury, it just got one point, which seems like a huge disparity to me. So we, we, we kind of want to balance those things.
Okay.
When, when we come back to you at your regular meeting next month, we'll hopefully have that all fleshed out and, and take your comments on that.
Okay, good. So another question. Does the grant require you to come up with goals? Cause I didn't see any goals listed. Sometimes goals kind of help you a little bit with the project selection process. Or maybe, you know, you can take goals that have been identified with the city's comprehensive plan and integrate them into this particular project. I don't know. I'm, I'm just thinking out loud.
Well, what, what it, what it requires us to do is two things. One is the goal of zero. Right? Zero fatalities and serious injuries. And, and then a review of city policies and programs and plans to identify ways that we can prioritize safety improvement. So if you've got a, a capacity improvement for, for a roadway intersection, how do, how do we, how do we make sure that we're accounting for all the safety things that need to be done? And so, so we're reviewing the city's street standards as well as other project selection things. So the city has a, a very long list of capital improvement projects that we've planned to go through and identify what roadway segment all of them are on. And from a safety perspective, say, if you can get funding for this capacity project or for this pavement project or whatever, then while, while you're there, add the sidewalk. Right? Because it's, it's higher in the priority process. We've also discussed about and, and still thinking some of this through obviously, but, but the, the 12th and large example there. Me and some of our engineers back at the office were talking the other day about, okay, so if you've got an intersection project and you're going to be putting sidewalks all the way around the intersection or a roundabout, what if there aren't any sidewalks that they connect to? So should there be a policy maybe that says, at least consider connecting somewhere to, to the existing street sidewalk network, right? And so we zoomed in on 12th and large. And as it turns out, there's sidewalks all the way around both sides of the street except for one. The southeast side for, for like two blocks. And that'd be a great candidate to say, if we're applying for that, let's make sure that we incorporate that those connections in there. So, so we're looking at things like that, how we can, how we can use outside funding sources to, to maybe push the sidewalk infill program ahead a little bit quicker when, when we can. But we've got to, we've got to be careful with, with some of the verbiage that we use, I think, because as we talked with public works director, he said, well, we got to be a little bit careful because if it's going to require right of way, we, we don't want to lose the funding altogether because we, we reduce our cost benefit ratios and things like that. So, you know, consider is probably going to be in there and, you know, where appropriate, when eligible, things like that for different kinds of grants. You know, I, I think that the safe routes for all grant would, would probably reach out, do a lot of those other safety improvements to, to add sidewalks and things like that. But talking with Mike earlier this week, he said, yeah, it'd be great to have sidewalks on both sides, but in some cases we have a house right next to the curb. So, so we can't require all that stuff, but you know, we do it where it can. And maybe, maybe we do sidewalk on one side of the street for everywhere, things like that. So, you know, we've got to be a little bit careful within the, the city budgets and, and you know, not inconvenience or kick somebody out of their home because by golly, we got to have a sidewalk here. Right? So we want to respect those kinds of things as well. So I, I hope that.
Yep. And I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Any, any other questions?
No.
Well, like I say, I, I had hoped to come with more results and get into some of the nitty gritties of some of this criteria, but there's a, there's a lot of data when, when we're trying to do our best to account for every street in town. So I hope to be able to have that stuff ready for you at your meeting in February to go over that with you. And we'll send, we'll, we'll have summaries of all the public comments and send those out in advance so that you can read those so that we don't have to spend a lot of time on it in the meeting. But we're going through those as well to say, hey, the, the public said that a connection here would be really good, or this is an issue, or in some cases, you know, the sight distance here isn't good because of vegetation and things like that. Some easy fixes in some cases. And all those, I mean, that's, that's the great part about public involvement. These are people that drive the streets every day and, and can give us some meaningful input to, to identify projects. We got quite a few. In fact, we had a gentleman that came to the, the farmer's market in his wheelchair and talked to, talked to us for a little while. And I'm, I'm sure that he's made several comments that you, you saw, you know, the little, little wheelchairs on that map saying, I can't use this street. Cause I'm out in the, I'm out in the street. Some of you, I, I should mention this as well. Some of you are familiar with Stan Green. He served on the blue, blue zones committee. He sent us a, a great email, which is not reflected in, in the public comments on the map. We'll, we'll try to get them all together there, but he brought us some great, great issues. And I forget the name of the neighborhood, but it's, it's south of the highway down near on Tom Arson. He said, if I'm walking from that neighborhood to Walmart, I've got to cross the street three times and plus the highway because there are sidewalks. I had to read through his email and track it through the map to make sure I was following what he said. And that's a great point, but then talking with the staff, it's like there's a parcel there that's not developed. They'll build the sidewalk when it develops. And so there, there are some things that we, we just have to live with for a certain amount of time, but, but, and, and he also mentioned as far as complete streets goes and, and some of the recommendations that complete sheets, complete street should extend to maintenance and construction. If you're going to close a road, you give a detour. If you're going to close a sidewalk, what, what do those people do? And then snow removal. Lots of times we plow the snow and it goes up on the sidewalk, right? So, so there, there's some challenges with, with how we do things. And, and I did learn though, that the city has a policy for, for property owners to remove the snow from their sidewalk in front of their homes. Kind of hard pressed to have law enforcement go out and, and tell people, you know, here's your notice, you gotta, you gotta move the snow. But I mean, they're all great intentions. And I think in an ideal world, it would all happen, but it, you know, it's, it's a process to, of just trying to improve things that way.
So Spencer, I have another question. Is there, is there a budget for this project to present to another committee or what have you within this region? For instance, I mean, I work for the MPO. Maybe I can add you to the agenda. Or I'm also going to be starting a new committee meeting. Maybe I can add you to that as well. Just wondering if there's funding for that, or maybe that's probably a question for, for Mike.
Let me go back and look and see where we're at, because getting input from, from others is, is great, I think, for the process. That was one of the big things that the, the federal grant wanted was public input. And, and I was reading through Richland Safety Action Plan. Their community of more than 60,000 people and we got more public comments than they did. So that's kind of cool. And it's, in my view, it's really, really helpful to see that community support. Hopefully we'll be able to get a bunch of comments when we go back out and say, okay, did we hear you? You know, in February is when we hope to be able to do that. So we'll bring things to you at your meeting in February. And probably go out to the public not too long after that, as soon as we can advertise and, and let people make comments on what we've prepared at that point. Okay. Let's see. I did show you some tables about intersections. We plan on doing that for road segments as well. Just to quite get it ready for today. So we'll, we'll try to rank all of the road segments and the intersections. And still thinking through, because we're, we're basically doing that for all of the functionally classified road segments, but we have quite a few comments off of the functionally classified network. Plus we have X collisions off of the functionally classified road network and, and we'll use those to help prioritize those roads as well. I mean, the, the ADA transition plan addresses all this, all the streets. And so between all that information, there may be some local streets that might rise with their prioritization up into the, you know, the, the bottom part of the functionally classified list of road segments as well. Cause I know that there's a couple of, not very many, but most of them are isolated and just spread out almost random. But there are some, some collisions on Bade and Birch, I think are, are two of the, two of the ones that we've got comments on that we'll want to look at. And I think, you know, between having an actual collision there and having comments there, I think that'll, you know, will give points to those to, to say there's a public interest and, and that those should, should be scored a little bit higher in the prioritization process. Okay. I thought I might take a little bit more of your time today, but we got through it pretty quick. So I appreciate your time. If you have questions that you'd like to email me about, we'll, we'll try to get you the summary of all the comments. There's 415 comments. And then there will be a map that goes with it that has, you know, this is comment 23, and then you can go to the table and see what those comments were. So if you guys can, can have a feel for that as well. So always send you stuff in advance of the next meeting.
Thank you. And I want to say thank you for this presentation and take a moment to ask if there are additional questions, follow-up to what you've shared with us. So we've heard from Commissioner Gomez and Commissioner Riegel. Do you have additional questions? Okay, let's see. Commissioner Larson?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Williams?
No, I appreciate all this hard work.
Yeah. Yeah, good. What's your understanding of the timeline? Will this come back to us again in a presentation form for updates? Or will we see this as an action item? Do you anticipate next time around?
Guess it depends on, on what you would consider action. But we would kind of like a thumbs up with, yeah, we're comfortable with this, or we would like these kinds of changes before it goes out to the public for public comment.
Yeah, the action item that this commission makes is a recommendation to the city council.
Okay.
So at some point, that, that's
Right.
will be taken.
So.
When do you anticipate to have a draft document? Because that's typically when you make a recommendation.
Right.
And so I'll hop a little bit when, when it's going to.
We won't have a draft document for your meeting in February. And I think we want to, in order to be eligible for funding, I'll have to check the, the schedule for the applications, but the, the intent would be to adopt this in time for being eligible to apply for implementation funds.
Good.
And so we may need to potentially do that by sending out a draft to you, an email, and then taking any comments. If that, if that can work and we can discuss that in February, I'll know a little bit more about the timeframes of those. But, but kind of what I was expecting was that we would come, come to you with a list of projects and strategies, prioritization criteria. And here's not a full draft document, but all of the tables that would go with it. And then we'd surround it with the text. That's typically how those documents get put together. Go to the public, get their feedback. And then if we needed to tweak any recommendations and things, because we get, you know, some meaningful feedback, then we would do that and then have a draft document for a review that would go to you guys and then to city council. I think we're, we're hoping to adopt something by the end of April.
Sounds good. Thank you.
But depending on when city council could see that, if you would meet again in May, right? So maybe we could present that and, and get your, your endorsement in early May. And then have council adopt it right after. I'll, I'll check the schedules as far as the, when the applications are due.
Good.
I, I will mention one other thing, I guess, just to seeing Commissioner Williams there. She had mentioned stuff about parking when we were here before, that that's going to be kind of an interesting thing. And I'll be honest, haven't figured out how to address the parking issue because there are six, 63, I think, or six, 62 or 63 of the collisions in the last five years were with a parked car. So we're going to dig into that a little bit and not quite sure. Maybe some recommendations on what the cross section of that street should be. Mike had mentioned, maybe we keep parking on one side and, and you know, give them a little bit more space for, for the parking and make it a one-way street or something like that. But we'll, we'll, we'll see where we go with that. We've got to dig in and see just what kind of, where the, where they're happening. Are they random or are they on just a few streets and things like that?
This is Commissioner Williams. Um, one of the things that the city council is working on is putting in some parking lots. So that we can legitimately maybe cut down on some of the on-street parking. Because without parking lots, you can't really block off on-street parking very well.
Right. Okay, that's good to know.
I do know via the grapevine at least, that there are definite plans in place for some parking lots that would create off-street parking along College Avenue, at least one of those that I'm aware of. Other questions? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Presentation.
Appreciate your times.
No other business before the commission at this time. Is there a motion that we conclude this meeting?
I'll make a co, a motion to conclude the meeting.
All right. Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. If there's no objection, the meeting is now concluded at 4:30 PM. Thank you again, everyone.
Interesting to me, I guess. There's interesting to me how which is kind of cool. Well, well, for sure.
That's my work. And which I don't know. But this particular time, I think, unfortunately. I'm a decision. A great outreach somehow. It's not through their chili bills or whatever it is. A bunch of flyers, the farmers market. I need that. I have 20 of them. And yeah, I'll, I'll ask for our two person who looks at it.
Yeah.